Okay, counsel, in the absence of the president of council, I'd like to call the June 21st Committee of the whole to order with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on mission, under God, invisible with liberty and justice strong.
Sorry. I believe there was a consensus reached that Mr. Reeves would conduct the media, the meeting, President Pro Tem today, so Jerry, if you'd like to assume the chair.
With that being said, we have one person that has signed up to speak before council tonight, Beth Ackerman. Yes. And please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Beth Ackerman. I live at 931 Gary Road, Oregon, Ohio, 43616. I know we got off on a bad start last week, earlier this week. Anyway, I want to just address you guys and let you know that we're supposed to be on the same team. Actually, you guys are supposed to be advocates for us, and I know that you believe you're doing so in the approach that you're trying to take with this, it sounds silly to say because it's not really a thing, it's an imaginary industrial site. I think, I would just like to know, well, first, I want to remind you, and I know a lot of people, I brought it up to you two about the 2025 plan, and in the executive summary, it says preserving environmental quality. This plan recommends the continuance of policies that preserve and protect the natural environment and that maximize the recreational value of natural areas for all citizens through constraining development to non-environmentally sensitive areas. So, am I allowed to ask you guys a question?
Of course.
Okay. February 8th, item 010-2021, you guys negotiate, or you discussed about doing the roadway around Mr. Cohen's woods up north at Corduroy? You all familiar? Okay. And I know that's something you've been working on for a while. So, we farm that, have for years, and we're real familiar. We farm Mr. Cohen's also, and we're very aware, and Mr. Cohen is very concerned for his animals, you know, his wildlife. So what I want to know is, being it's a federal wetland, was there an assessment, was, what was done to mitigate the impact on that property, on those woods?
Mr. President? Start, Mr. Roman, conduct.
At the time, we worked on that roadway development, I know we'd been talking to you about it just because I know you were farming at the time. Our goal from the beginning was to just let it stay there, and we thought it was a nice tree screen, and so all our planning was around building so it would stay there, actually staying, instead of, we originally planned to put our roadway to the south of it and thought it would be a better project if we could stay to the north of, between the roadway, between the wood and the tracks, and that's what-
I know Bob said, yeah, you can go behind, I know he wasn't for you going to the south of it, but I, I'm just wondering, was there ever an environmental impact on, on putting a road on two sides of it?
Let Mr. Roman do that side of it.
No, I can tell you just from my own experience of working with any wetlands, I wanted to avoid the wooded area, you know, so we just stayed north of it.
Okay, so there was no-
No, no, it was, I don't think, you know, honestly, I think to develop that would be difficult, but yeah, Jim Cohen owned that, and I think his, and then he spoke for his neighbor as well.
Well, Bob, yeah, Bob lives there.
Whoever's to the east, I think it was an older lady.
Yeah, they, I mean, but she doesn't have the woods. I'm just wondering if you guys did do diligence on the wetland that was existing.
Yeah, I can just tell you that, one, I thought to avoid it no matter what, so even if you put the road in south, you were going to avoid wooded area regardless, but Jim, in speaking for his neighbor, they wanted the road due north as far as possible, so, and it totally made sense.
It's still, it's still going to go up against it on the side, so I was just curious-
But it made sense, it made sense to move the road where we did.
Yeah, just seeing, I mean, yeah, you didn't run right through it, I appreciate that. So, yeah, I just, and I would want to know, have you entered into any agreement of any kind with any of the landowners in your proposed industrial area?
Mr. Beasley.
The city has not entered into any agreements, nor has the foundation, they are, or they were, last I was aware of it, negotiating, but I haven't been aware of any in the last week or so.
Do you plan having a public meeting? I mean, this is why you had such a big crowd, was that people were upset because they were hearing about it, not from you. And I know through COVID and everything, we all got pretty lax about it because out of sight, out of mind, and you know, our people that we voted in have this handled, we don't, we don't need to look over their shoulder, but we all got a big wake-up call in that this was all just moving along, and sort of a wise man shared with me today, he said, this is very much like the Coke plant that Oregon tried to put into place, and, which I had forgotten about because it got shot down due to pressure, environmental pressures. So, I'm just asking, on behalf of our citizenry and our neighbors that would be directly on the border of this proposment, proposed industrial site, if you would get some citizen input, because my understanding is if you want to change the land use in an area that's traditionally industrial, then residential, commercial to residential agricultural, you would at least have that conversation with the public. I mean, you had three over the Kmart site, so at least three, and that wasn't even a use change.
Mr. President?
Mr. Beasley.
Yeah, just as a note, as we said, and obviously, as you said, it got off to a rough start, but as we said from the beginning, before anyone, the city or anyone could, there will be a minimum of two public hearings, and I would assume that would be a minimum.
Before you enter even into any purchasing agreements with any landowners?
That, I don't know. I'd have to check with the foundation.
Because you are changing use, a significant use.
No one could change the use without those public hearings.
One last question, I swear. The Old Lucky Farmers Garden Center location, were any tax dollars used, or you have any agreement that, or Oregon Economic Development, have you entered into any agreement with now the new owners of that location?
Mr. Mayor.
We were, we were, or I was sent information from the realtor that listed it, if we had any interest in it. They said we were not, all right? And I don't, I don't know who approached them, I know nothing about the purchase, I knew someone who was looking at it, and that individual told me, he said, oh, I was, I was looking at the purchase, it was Ben Warnke, and he said, next thing I knew, it was sold.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're talking about handling, I mean, if you went to the website of the people that bought it, it's raising a lot of eyebrows because they just so happened to handle industrial spells, and you know, it's going to be a significant departure from the storage facility that we've known it as, and-
Well, the only, the only thing I could, I could say about that is, that has been zoned M2 since the beginning of times, since the beginning of times.
Oh, but M1, right?
Huh?
M1.
Or M1?
Yeah.
All right, and you know what the difference between M1 and M2 are? We call it heavy industrial and light, but it's actually, it would be more properly stated as inside manufacturing versus outside manufacturing.
Well, I mean, Lucky Farmers handled herbicides and stuff there, I mean, I know-
So, it doesn't mean what Lucky Farmers did, it wasn't a special use. So, M1 would permit or allow anything that the M1 zoning code says. So, somebody bought it, so I'm just guessing, they wanted a parcel, maybe they needed a building.
It has nothing to do with what you guys are trying to-
I have no idea who they are, no idea.
Mr. President, just-
Mr. Beasley.
Yeah, they, I can assure you that we had no conversation with, I still don't know who bought it, and, but I know that neither the foundation, because they called me and asked me about it, and the person I learned the most about it was from Don Nelson, because I asked Don, I said, you know, who bought it?
He's got pumpkins growing there, yeah.
Right, and he, he actually grows on that farm, and he told me what it was, and he wasn't worried about it, but that's the only person I've ever had a conversation with.
Well, it's just, because we're not hearing it above board, and you know, we're finding it out, just kind of want, we all communicate, we'll all be a lot better off, but yeah, I just think, you know, if you guys would just represent us like you got voted in to do, we'd really appreciate it.
And, Mr. President, can I continue?
Yes, sir.
And that is, that is always our attempt, but remember, we're representing nearly 20,500 people, and so not only, it maybe looked like it was here in the room, were the people that were right around there, but we're also looking out for the whole city as a whole, and it's a balancing act.
Oh, I appreciate-
And we try, we try to have options.
Yeah, job creation, definitely, I mean, the job opportunities that are already here that we don't fill in Oregon, I mean, I think that'd be a more pressing matter, I mean, that's income tax you guys could have, but I really think that it's the land use issue. I mean, if you change that, I think you should involve the public.
Well, we're, not, we're, not only we're required to do, but the two meetings that were required to do by law, I always envisioned that we would have one before that, but we had to know if there was even a possibility, if there was enough of those landowners that were willing to sell. So, we were kind of backed up on a timeline, if we were going to, to entertain the idea of possibly attracting one of those, and the battery plant was one of them, and they were, they were wanting something right away, so we had to know if we had any interest at all selling.
Even if those people got on board, you couldn't possibly have had a dialogue with the public about the land use change in a time that would suit them.
Correct, but we weren't, we weren't that far along, we wanted to know if we were in the playing field, in the playing field. Why would we, why would we go through all kind of, it's, it's a lot of work, it's an awful lot of work, just-
I've put in a lot more time than I had anticipated.
I imagine, I imagine you did, but we had an awful lot to do to see, number one, we would like to attract something, all right? That was one of our objectives, something that we would have choices of something, of course, it would impact the area more than farm field, but with, if we were going to put some type of manufacturing in there, we'd like to pick the one that we thought would be the least impact of manufacturing.
But not environmentally, maybe, I mean, that's where the public input would be helpful, is that, yeah, like if you wanted to do something that promoted our tourism industry.
When you talk about wetlands, when Brian Cushing was out of the equation, that took those wetlands out, the Buchanan property may or may not have wetlands on it, we believe it is.
It is federal, and they, and they're, I understand from the-
All right, I'm going to say, it's not registered.
Fish and Wildlife said you have to stay 660 feet from the stand of woods that the Eagle's Nest is in.
Well, that, that is, we got some information on that, but the original layout could have possibly put parking in that area, and, and we talked and put a different layout that avoided that area, so we always thought we could work around it.
Heather Polliff did a beautiful story on the resurgence of the bald eagle population, and right here, right next to us on Ottawa County, I mean, that's, I don't know if you live where I live, that's not that far away, but anyway, if, I know, I can give you guys a link, it was, Governor DeWine was touting how we brought back the eagles and what a success story that is, so, I mean, this is just, you know, conversation we're going to keep on having, but anyway, I, I do hope, I mean, maybe you guys need to put a liaison out to the public that actually talks to us something without us having to come in like a bunch of hitchhiker, you know, I mean, we all got to live here together, but it's like, just give us a little more respect than what we've gotten out of this situation so far, okay?
And we, we moved as fast as we could to see if we had any interest here.
I know.
And it wasn't by design to hurt anybody.
Well, I mean-
And people, I understood there were people that were not going to like this.
Oh, I think it's more than like, I think it's, it's changing the land use is a huge-
Of course it is.
Huge thing, yeah.
Of course it is.
So, I mean, it's, it's more than just-
The land use of most of the property, wrong route two.
Oh, you guys have my house in a commercial area in one of your plans, we, my husband and I were looking at it, and they go, did you notice our whole, the whole farm is taken out in that, you know? We feel a little bit, I don't know-
So many feet back, right.
That was one from about 20 years ago.
I mean, we own Route 2 frontage, you know, we've heard, we've heard commercial corridor for a zillion years, and so this one kind of came out of left field, you know, this whole thing, but I think you guys would just be on the, just lead, lead the way with the environmental protection and not come down, like, don't paint us into this, the all industry city, I mean, that's, I think you'd find that a lot of us survived COVID because of our open spaces where we weren't locked up in our homes, so, anyway, maybe think more of a conservancy area, that would be, that would be a feather in your cap to retire on that you could be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. With this being a committee of the whole, there isn't a requirement of attendance, and we have five council people here, also in attendance with us tonight is Clerk of Council, Tina Evans, our Mayor Mike Sepherian, City Administrator, Mr. Michael Beasley, Law Director, Ms. Alyssa Papura, our Public Service Director, Paul Roman, our Finance Director, Darlin Huntermark, Commissioner of Building and Zoning, Mr. Jim Gilmore, and our Fire Chief, Denny Hartman. Counsel, we have five items before us tonight for considerations, items number 68 through 72. Item number 68 is presented by Mayor Mike, Michael J. Sepherian and Finance Director, Darlin Huntermark, and we're going to go right straight to Darlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this ordinance that we're bringing forward is just the intent to refer-
Darlin, I don't think your mic's on.
Darlin, is your mic on?
It's green.
You just got to come close to it.
Pull it closer. Or just talk a little louder.
Thank you.
All right, is that better?
Much better.
Okay, sorry. This is, we had a Gary Gilkerson, a property owner, come and petition to vacate some property on Jonathan Road, and we are just wanting to refer that to the Plan Commission.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
And I was a little bit of part of this also, and there is easement in, in this parcel that is listed, it translates into the value of, of the cost of it, and I think Mr. Roman determined that was okay with, with the sale of this property, no other intended use other than the easement that goes through it.
Thank you. Counsel, with your pleasure on item 68 of 2021.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Horniac.
I have a question on this. According to the map, this is the one side of Jonathan Road is Paper Street, not the other.
This, the other side of Warden Road, that would be to the south, has already been vacated.
That has been vacated, okay. Wasn't indicated here, I just wanted to make sure, because I thought, I recall doing-
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.?
It's also worth noting that tonight is just the first step, there's certain issues that should be resolved, there are questions that should be asked, the first step will go to the Plan Commission, they'll go through their process, they'll come back here before action that simply refers to there, but that, when you look at that map, that does kind of stand out to you, but the other side was already vacated in kind of a quirkier event.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Any other questions from counsel? Hearing none. Counsel, with your pleasure on item 68 of 2021.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Horniac.
I move to move item 68 of 2021 to next week's agenda.
To the-
Second.
Thank you, second by Mrs. Polliff. We have a motion by Mr. Horniac to move item 68, and second by Mrs. Polliff, Councilwoman Polliff. We'll move on to item 69, it's presented by Mayor Michael J. Sepherian, City Administrator, Michael J. Beasley, and Commissioner of Building and Zoning, Mr. Jim Gilmore. Mr. Beasley.
Mr. President, I'll do a little, start off with this, and we'll go to Mr. Gilmore, I think we've got six little conditions in here. This is another, we talked, I think, last year and the year before, that food trucks would be a work in progress, and as we try things and see how the community reacts, Council President Wallenzak asked us to take a look at this and made some recommendation, recommendations after he got input from some business owners in the city, and we developed some legislation that the outdoor storage really isn't changed much in this, this is really about just food trucks, and it allows essentially two paths. One, if you meet these condition, certain conditions, you can just come in and have your food trucks at a site, and with a very simple process. If you want to do something more, though, and if you don't meet the conditions, you have to come and get a conditional use and go through a process. Each of the processes is pretty simple, it's just, again, we're trying to find that balance where if we have Oregon resident that's borrowed money and put up a brick and mortar restaurant, how do you balance that against a food truck that comes next door at just certain times? So, we think this is a good compromise along those lines, and we're, we're looking for ideas and input over the next week, we don't, you know, there's no hurry with this, but that's why I wanted to bring it out to a committee of the whole, let's let Jim kind of take us through the six conditions, or just give a little quick summary of the legislation.
Counsel, President.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, Mike said, there is six conditions. If you don't want to go get a conditional use, and first of all, you must have permission from the property owner, the property owner could host food trucks no more than twice per month, and limited to a total of six times per year, any single vendor is limited to 10 days a year, and of course, the food truck must be approved by our fire department and the local, or in the, in the Toledo-Lucas County Health Department before any, any permission can be granted, and we're going to charge a $30 fee for the paperwork, and then there's exemptions, and the exemptions are festivals, church and school events, and community functions.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Beasley.
I guess it's important to note that if you fall through that process, go into that process, it's very easy, if you want to do a food truck on a more regular basis, and a constant, or have it weekly, or even every day, you just simply have to file a request for a conditional use and go through the, the planning process, and you can get one to be someplace every day if that's what makes sense, or twice a week, or, or whatever it wants, we just want to have two paths, we're trying to make it as easy as possible to come up and put up a food truck in an event, but not make it something that automatically allows someone to compete with another business with a different set of rules, so we think we have struck that balance, but take a look at it over the next week and give us your thoughts, and touch base with Council President Wallenzak too, when he's back, that's something that we've kind of gone back and forth on, or the mayor, or Dr. Jim.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Horniac.
Just a couple pieces on clarification of this, and I do want to talk a little bit about the outdoor retail, retail piece of this as well. So, the food trucks, if they're, so basically, when they would come to the Building and Zoning Office to complete their paperwork, request their permit, they would have to have written permission from the property owner. So, if it's somebody who's leasing the space within a strip mall or any building, so say Big Lots wants to have a food truck event, does the property owner have to give permission, or can they, as the store lesser, go ahead and lease see, do it themselves?
It was written as the property owner would have to give permission.
Okay. So, the intention of those cases, anybody who is leasing space or renting space would have to secure permission from the actual owner?
That's correct.
Okay, and that would be a condition of them obtaining their permit?
Mr. President? Just a note, Steve, we weren't, we thought about that with the way we wrote it, I could see doing it a different way too, you know, in the same way that, you know, right now, if I'm the store, maybe the property owner is in California, and it's not a very practical thing, but we, that's one of those, that's one of those things that we thought could have gone either way, just for what it's worth.
Fair enough, and on this is, is the intent or the idea with this, that a food truck that has a permit to operate within these constraints, has that permit for the day? So, I want to set up on July 3rd, I can, I have that permit for the entirety of July 3rd.
Correct, or you could have it for the two days if you'd like, okay, but we limited it to, to a, let's see, on the property owner, he's allowed to do it, he's allowed to host twice a month or six times per year. Just to add to the property owner, we were thinking more of strip centers where there's multiple tenants, and we didn't want a food truck to use one tenant and go down the line and use another tenant.
Right.
Okay, so that's why we have property.
Fair enough, that, that would just be one of the points, is maybe clarifying how long that conditional use.
Well, the conditional use is as long as the request and what the Plan Commission feels is appropriate. These are regulations, mind you, just to deal without a conditional use, okay?
That's all I had on that, I don't know if anybody else has questions on that, but I do want to talk a little bit about the outdoor retail sales regulations and the genesis for some of the changes or additions or adds that were done to that. So, the outdoor retail sales should not be located in any required yard area within the lot?
Yeah.
Again, we're speaking just to commercial zone property, correct?
Well, that's correct, this is commercially zoned. And I didn't, and that was my change to cross that out, because every time we went to the Plan Commission, they forgive that aspect of it, because people want to put it in the required front yard so people could see it, okay? So, we, that rule has never been followed, it was always forgiven by the Plan Commission.
Okay, so if, in how this is, if I have, again, I'll use Big Lots just because it's right there in the middle of everything, with a big parking area in front, if Big Lots decides they want to sell outdoor sheds.
Yes.
Can they display those in the frontage area of that property up along Route 2? Because I believe that was some of the discussion or concern that was raised previously, was what can we do there?
Well, they could, but you-
They could, but you have to understand that it is a conditional use, and maybe
in certain situations, the Plan Commission is not going to want it right up on the street, so it's dealt on an individual basis, each, each conditional use is.
Okay, and all the conditional uses go through the Planning Commission before they're presented?
That's correct.
Here, or do they go directly into effect if the Planning Commission?
That's correct, a conditional use is unlike a special use where it takes both Plan Commission and then final approval from you, the Plan Commission on a conditional use is the final, is the final say.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Polliff.
So, I know there's quite a few neighborhoods in the city of Oregon that have food trucks coming in for special little events in their neighborhood, there's our- Those are not included because they're residential. Is that correct?
Well, if I may...
Go ahead. It doesn't apply to them. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Gilmore.
Well, first of all, if they're in the street, this rule does not apply, okay? This is for property only. And they wouldn't meet the exemptions on community function. For instance, a block party, they pull it up in someone's driveway. They would, they're exempt from this portion of the code.
Yeah, I just want a clarification on that because then if somebody wants to do something in their neighborhood, they're not going to, you know, be in fear of, oh, my God, I didn't get a permit. So they don't need one.
That's correct. I think it's clearly stated that it's a community function.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Beasley.
One note, Councilwoman, and it does, it is an interesting point, though, that none of this regulation will apply if somebody just pulls up onto a street someplace. And the only, parking rules apply. But so in those settings, again, this is a, you know, kind of a zoning land use permit approach. We're not requiring any permit, especially lots of neighbors are doing this kind of fun. Have a truck out for a party and that sort of thing. This one, this one applied.
Thank you for that clarification.
Council, any further questions? Hearing none. What's your pleasure for item sixty-nine of two thousand and twenty-one?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Horniac.
I move that we move item sixty-nine of two thousand and twenty-one to next week's agenda.
Second. Thank you. It was, the motion was made by Mr. Horniac to move the item. And second by Mr. Dabish. Are there any objections? Hearing none. We'll move that to next week's agenda. Item number seventy is presented by Michael J. Seferian, Michael Beasley, and Mr. Gilmore.
I'll start and they can move on. That people put up tents and tried to make permanent structures like garages out of them. They make certain tents that are, people putting their boats under and other things. And before it gets out of hand, we needed some kind of regulations because we had complaints, we had things blow over. And I want to start on, who wants to go next? I'll just...
Mr. Beasley.
I guess the important thing to note is this isn't something we were looking, this wasn't a problem we were looking for a solution to. We'd had some conflict between neighbors. We, people were using it. We do regulate, you know, things like lawn sheds and where they belong and where you can put them. And if it was, if you made the lawn shed out of canvas, the rules didn't apply almost. So we tried to recognize that challenge and resolve the conflicts of the neighbors with ordinance. And let Jim...
Mr. Gilmore.
Well, that's correct. We really view these structures as temporary. So I simply cleaned up the, this portion of the code saying, you know, make it clear they needed to obtain a permit and it would be good for ten days. And I could, we could and we would renew it once. That's pretty much the only change on this. And again, if there was a circumstance where, a special circumstance where somebody needed it longer, they would have the ability to go to the Board of Zoning Appeal for relief on that.
Council, any questions? Hearing none. Council, what's your pleasure for item number sixty, item seventy of two thousand and twenty-one?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Horniac.
I move that we place item seventy of two thousand and twenty-one on next week's agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dabish. It was presented by, I mean, it was moved by Mr. Horniac, second by Mr. Dabish. Any objections? Hearing none. We'll move item seventy next week's regular meeting agenda. Up next is item number seventy-one. It's presented by Michael J. Seferian and Public Service Director, Mr. Paul Roman.
I'll start, but this is really Paul's baby. But it was a pretty exciting day there when we were opening the bids in this very room and for our town center, the roadway. And we had really good results. Paul, share that one.
Mr. Roman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor. And so as we mentioned, that this ordinance is needed for the construction and of the Oregon Town Center project. And anyone not familiar, I know we've had our meetings, but if you look at where East Harbor Drive is, this is really extending that road from Dustin to Pickle. So it's a north-south alignment, includes public utilities. And yeah, the bid was very competitive. We had eight bidders. And Moser Construction had the lowest and best bid. They're a very good company, but they were about 1.4 million under our budget and estimate. So it was a very competitive bid. And even the road program was very competitive, which is the next ordinance. But they will, they'll do a great job. So we're very confident in them. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Roman? Hearing none. Council, what's your pleasure for item seventy-one of two thousand and twenty-one?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Horniac.
I move that we place item seventy-one of two thousand and twenty-one on next week's agenda.
Second. It was moved by Mr. Horniac, second by Mr. Dabish. Any objections? Hearing none. Mayor will put that on next week's agenda. Item seventy-two.
Oh.
Yeah.
As Mr. Roman touched on, this is our road program for this year. Multiple people are being awarded different parts of the project. And he can tell you the details.
Mr. Roman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if you look in the exhibit, and I think Tina, that the summary was put out, Mr. President?
I'm sorry, Mr. Roman.
Last week, I had noticed when the Exhibit A was put together that it was missing a summary of costs. I was hoping that that was added to this.
I, yes, there was.
Okay. All right. So in knowing that, this bid included a lot of different projects, a lot of residential streets, a lot of main roads. We had some work for the rec, actually concrete for batting cages. There's some utility work for a proposed or a future street department building. And so, so yeah, there's really five contractors involved, but all of them were the lowest and best bid for that, for that particular projects that are listed. So we've worked with all of these companies in the past. They all meet our best bid criteria. They're all very good contractors. And so everything is, was budgeted for and was included in the two thousand and twenty-one's CIP budget. So again, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Roman on item seventy-two, Council? Hearing none. Council, what's your pleasure for item number seventy-two of two thousand and twenty-one?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Dabish.
I move for item seventy-two of two thousand and twenty-one to next week's agenda.
Second.
The item was moved by Mr. Dabish and second by Mrs. Polliff. Any objections? Hearing none. Mayor, item seventy-two will be put on next week's agenda. Before we get to the mayor's report, Chief Hartman, did you want to show the video or the pictures? Okay.
It went so well last time.
Now that's a built-up little anticipation, right?
I waited a week for this.
You just got to know where to stick it.
I'll slide this way then. Excuse me. Chief Hartman, is there any lean into it?
Well, yeah, we, I, again, like I talked about last week, on Thursday, on last Thursday, our bid started. We will have a pre-bid meeting, I believe it's next Tuesday. And then we'll open the bids on July eighth. Again, this is about a 21,000-square-foot building, obviously on our wind road area. I did that, that was a, that was a good sound. Hopefully we got something going there. And what, I just want to give you a quick overview of what it looks like. Hey, we're going to make it. Let's go ahead on that.
Chief, do you want to just go through these?
Yeah, if you just get on the first one and then, yeah. Okay, so that, this is, again, this is just a conceptual view. It's pretty close to what it looks like, is going to look like. But you can go ahead, Tina, and do another one. It just gives you kind of an overview of the outside. The landscaping will probably be a little bit different, et cetera. But it's a, we're, we think it's a very nice-looking building. We're very, very excited about the look of it. I think it'll fit well with the community as well. And then, again, just a couple of looks at it. That's obviously the rear. It's a five bay. And we'll get to the, go ahead and go to the next one. And one more. That's, that's, that's the, I call that the money shot. That's, that's the one that, you know, we have that tower feature. It's a, we think that that really sets the building off. That'll be at the main entrance. And then the next slide, I believe, is the, is a blank slide. That's...
I'll go back. That's the last one.
Okay. Can you go back? I think that he had the overall layout. I don't know if... Um...
No. I think the new dorm?
Okay, never, it would, I, I wanted, I wanted to have the, it never works perfectly. But I was just going to have the overall, or the, you know, the overall layout. I just wanted to give you just a couple of updates. One of the things that is really big now, it's been decided, or it's been, there's a much better understanding of all the carcinogens, et cetera, that firefighters are exposed to and how much of that they take back. They take back to the building with them. They take it to bed with them, all those kind of things. So with this, this is, this is a bunch of state-of-the-art stuff here where we'll decontaminate out on the apparatus floor. We'll have, we'll have basically airlocks from the apparatus floor between that and where everybody will live, which is, you know, that's, that's, that's quite remarkable. We have, we'll have bunk rooms for twelve people. When our, we will be proposing or we'll be bringing some new hires to you next week. And when we have everybody up and running, we'll have eight, eight people on per shift full-time and two, two part-timers every day. Now, there'll be vacations and so forth. But that would, that'd put a total of 10 people in that station. So we obviously needed to have the bunks for that. The, the bunks will be individualized. So Tina, if you go back to the one that says bunk room, the, go back to the... Just you, yeah, that's. And go one more then if...
Is that king or queen?
It's a single. I don't know. Okay, we got it. Anyways, it's individualized, but not, not completely private. I, I, at one point in time, it was departments were trying to go where you have a completely private room. And I've, I personally had some bad experience with that. Too private is not necessarily always too good. So we won't have it. And the one other thing, I'm not going to keep you all night. There you go. That's, that's, that's what the hallway looks like with the, with the individualized bunk rooms. The one other thing, where the bunker gear is, and we don't have pictures of that because it's on, but where the bunker gear will be kept, that'll be on the, that'll be on the opposite end of this building. That has to double as a tornado shelter. That room alone, the cost of that room alone is tremendous. But it is one of those things. It is a requirement. It's a requirement that that has to be able to stand alone after a tornado. It has to have basically a vault door. As a matter of fact, I, we just, I just signed a rec for a company that has to certify that our architect is doing a, is doing the tornado shelter correctly. Another $3,500, you know, just easy come, easy go. Boy, my signature's looking good on all those things. So I don't know if anybody's got any questions. But again, like I said, we're, we're moving forward with the project. We're hoping that we don't have to steal Paul's money that, that he saved. And for our project, we would, we would love to have the same situation where we were under bid. But we'll, we'll obviously wait and see for that. I don't know if anybody's got any questions otherwise.
Chief?
What it is. Go ahead.
How high are the, I mean, the garage doors are?
I think they're 12-foot doors. I think the overall, I think they're 12, 12 or 14.
And that, that gives us plenty of room for...
Yeah, as a matter of fact, well, we're going to be excited because all of our doors now are 10 feet. And we had to buy, every fire truck that we bought has to be under 10 feet, except for the ladder trucks. Obviously, the ladder trucks won't fit on it there. But, you know, all the other stuff like at Station 41, those are all 10-foot doors. The last engine that we bought actually had to have them lowered a little bit, and they fit in there like this. So we're two foot above those doors or four foot above will be, it'd be like heaven for us.
Thank you. Mr. Beasley.
Mr. President, just to note, one of the things that, as I've been involved in a lot of fire station projects over the last 40 years or so, the evolving regulatory expectations are significant in terms of the cost and the best practice separating the, and it's for the protection of firefighters and the protection of the community and utilization of equipment. The equipment has evolved and the technology has evolved so much. So in terms of, you know, what it costs per square foot for a fire station, it's just very different than what it was 10 years ago as that, as that world has evolved, national standards have evolved and Ohio standards have evolved. One other note, obviously, it is time to build and move this. We're aware, we're building at a time when, you know, well, steel and lumber are higher. Now, they've, they've come off their peaks. So we're, we're, we're hoping we get some good competitive bids coming in the next few weeks.
Thank you. We'll start with the mayor's report.
Just going to make a little comment on this fire station. We sat in this very room not too long ago. And our architectural firm was, was giving us a time parameters where we wouldn't even have been this far along by winter. And we stepped up the game real quickly. We each had a different role. Tim Zale had the responsibility of having a wow factor, and I think he got it.
Well, yeah, thank you. But if you look at those doors in the front, too, if people can't see here, those are all glass.
Yes.
Those are all glass. You'll see the fire trucks through it. And...
Yeah, I just don't think it prints well on this, this architect's remnant.
And actually, I can send these to everybody. Just a note on that, the glass on those doors that, when you look at it, the feature that they put on there is actually opposite. They have glass on the outside instead of the inside. And when, in our, our building, it will be, the glass will be the inside. So you can see everything inside. And then the plain panels will be on the outside.
So, so we did a lot in a short time, and everybody worked together. And we'll have construction yet this year, which was, I think it set the architect back a little bit at first. So other than that, one of our retired employees, Jim Finger, died yesterday from wastewater treatment. Oh, he's the water treatment man. And...
Was it both?
Oh, yeah.
Both at one time or another.
So... That's, there's one other thing I was going to say. Well, you can move on if I think of it out.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, Mr. Beasley.
Mr. President and members, just a note, felt really strong again about our residential and streets program. And the city has really invested well over the last... residential and streets program, and the city has really invested well over the last number of years in having good quality streets. Whenever we have a problem, Paul's shop and comes up with a pretty good plan to get it addressed pretty quickly. So we're feeling good about where we are and looking forward to keeping pace on it. Thanks.
You got one more?
One more thing.
Mr. Mayor.
We'll be swearing in Ryan Spangler as Assistant Chief Wednesday here at 9 o'clock in this room.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pupora.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Roman.
I just had one item, Mr. President, and I, there's another ordinance I was working on, and I hope to complete it this week, but it's the purchase of Bakhti icing salt that renewed our contract from last year. And I know Toledo has already done that. As you guys know, we, we go into a, a joint bid ad with Toledo because we have our salt delivered by ship, and it is the most cost-effective way to purchase salt. So, but, but even with a 3% increase, we believe this renewed purchase is the way to go. Still $10 per ton cheaper than any other purchase in Northwest Ohio, so. But I'll, hopefully I'll have it ready, have it for next week's agenda, so.
Thank you. Mr. Zale.
No real work, Mr. President. Just another comment about the fire station. I think you're all going to be really impressed with the interior of this place when you see the layout inside. The fire chiefs have done an amazing job of how they set this, this station up inside, and it is truly going to be state-of-the-art. Truly something to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zale. Mr. Dambich.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dambich. Ms. Pauliff?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Pauliff. Mr. Horniac?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. And I have nothing from my standing committee, so at this time, I'll seek a motion to adjourn. Mr. Zale? Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dambich. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.